Was told thankfully that I don't have to read the script anymore. So we'll just, if you're here, we're assuming that you already know how to get on to our meetings. So welcome to everyone who's here. Let's start with the roll call, please.
Commissioner Del Negro.
Here.
Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Commissioner Quake.
Present.
Vice Chair Davis.
Here.
And Chair Joe.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let's, okay, and so let's start with also the Pledge of Allegiance, please. You can have the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So just launching right in to item number one is agenda review. Do we have any items that need to be reviewed in terms of the agenda for this evening? Nope, seeing none, we'll go on to approval of the minutes. So this is for the special meeting minutes of September 8th, 2021. Do we have any comments or changes or motion?
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of September the 8th.
Do we have a motion? The second from Commissioner Del Negro and any comments or questions anybody has before we vote? Commissioner Wong?
Looks good to me.
Okay, I did have one comment in that I, I think we, I don't know if this has changed, but I know in the past we've said that we want to keep it to action items. And I think that it's, I would actually, if that's okay with the other commissioners, I would like to make sure that we try to keep it to that as much as possible. We had only one project, but the, the minutes were four pages long. If we get to where we have multiple projects, I think our minutes are going to be really long if we do the discussion as it is. So that's my thought on that. I'd like to. Not sure if that's how, Commissioner Davis?
I agree.
How the other commissioners, okay with that?
Um. I think action minutes are good. However, I think she did a really great job with them. So that being said, whatever works.
I think it may be good to have a section at the end, just action items, but I think it's really great to have a record because it's community input and recognizes, you know, all the different stakeholders and expresses their record of their viewpoints. So I think it was all good. But it might be good to have a separate section at the end, just action items, if you want to streamline it for that.
Yeah, either that or we do have, we've noted before that we do have, this is all recorded. So all the input and if anybody ever needs to refer back to it, we do have all the discussion in there. I just feel like for the interest of like this evening, we have a big topic. If we get, and I don't think that this was poorly done. I'm just saying, I think I'm fine with the minutes as they are and it's good to have the discussions. But I just think that if we don't, if we go beyond the action items too much, we're going to have 20 page minutes and I don't think that's a good idea. So. So I'm fine with them as they are and we can go ahead and call for the vote on approving them, please.
Okay, Commissioners Del Negro.
Approved.
Commissioner Wong?
Approved.
Commissioner Quake?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
And Chair Joe?
Yes.
Okay, proof five zero via the voice vote. Thank you. And thanks for the feedback. I will, Roscoe and I will take that back and stream one.
Thank you. So item number three is the public communication. So this is reserved for persons wishing to comment on any, any item not appearing on the agenda, but is under the purview of the planning commission. So do we have anyone who is here to speak on any topic beyond what's in the agenda? Okay, seems like no.
There are no hands.
Okay. I'm getting feedback. Is other, are other people hearing kind of a buzzing sound? Okay, thank you. I don't know where that was coming from. Okay, so we'll move on to item four, which is a public, public hearing. I'm sorry, I'm going, oh, this is correct. This is a public hearing. And we have none on here, so we'll move forward. And then item five is new business. So this is regarding the active transportation plan. So consideration of a resolution recommending that the Millbury City Council adopt the active transportation plan. Can we have a separate vote, please?
I believe Matt, Matt Braun Kittleson is going to share, share his screen in a second here. All right. Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Chair Joe and planning commissioners. Item before you tonight is for the active, active transportation plan. I'm Nestor Guevara, Associate Planner here in the city of Millbury. I'm joined by Darcy Smith, our Community Development Director, Roscoe Mata, our Planning Manager, and Matt Braun at a, an Associate Planner at Kittleson, our consulting team. Next slide, please. So the objective for tonight, staffers recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city, the Millbury City Council adopt the active transportation plan. Next slide, please. Thank you. A bit of project overview. The initial plan development actually started back in 2016. There is an administrative draft prepared at that time, and I believe it was presented to the bicycle or, sorry, to the Parks and Rec Commission, but the project was put on hold in 2018. This was put on hold until 2021, April of this year. The active transportation plan development was rebooted along with the general plan update and then the development of the downtown and El Comino Real specific plan. In July, July of this year, the public review of the draft was started. It was released for public view, the ATP was, along with the environmental documents. This lasted until September 1st of 2021. And now as we're kind of getting towards the latter stages of, of the process, we'll be looking to adopt, formally adopt the active transportation plan by next month, hopefully. The active transportation plan, it's, it's a part of a simultaneous planning effort along with the general plan update and the downtown and El Comino Real specific plan. Of the active transportation plan, which is the bicycle and pedestrian master plan for the city, runs on a, on a different track from, from the other two. So it's a different timeframe. It's, the ATP is being, kind of advanced a little bit quicker, where we're, we're hoping to have it adopted formally by next month, whereas the general plan and then the downtown, you know, Comino Real specific plan would be, would be over the next year. So in, in 2022 is the timeline when we would be, we would be seeking adoption for those two plans. And now I'll hand it off to Matt, who will, will go into kind of the finer details of the, of the ATP.
Thanks, Nestor. So wanted to first start off just defining what is an active transportation plan. So this is the definition provided by the Active Transportation Alliance that I think pretty simply states what we're, what we're aiming at. So an active transportation plan, which you may hear me refer to as a, an ATP, is really, it's a comprehensive set of strategies to ensure better options for biking, biking, walking, and access to transit. And so really what that encompasses is recommendations for prioritizing different infrastructure improvements and then outlining other recommendations for new policies, processes, or in combination with that infrastructure based on public and stakeholder input. And when we think about the purpose of the plan, specific to Millbury, really, starting off with just trying to document and understand the current state of active transportation, active transportation in the city, whether that's how many people are walking and biking, how many people walking and biking are involved in crashes, or kind of the facilities that are available for people walking and biking in the city. Based on that existing conditions, then assessing what are the needs for walking and biking? And then establishing a vision, goals, and actions that the city can take to achieve that vision. When the plan then identifies priority projects for both bicycling and walking and develop some cost estimates for those priority projects and also identify some funding opportunities to help augment those, augment city funds to help, help get these improvements implemented. So stepping out to the, the very highest level of the ATP is the vision statement. So the vision statement that was developed as part of the plan, I'll just read it straight out here. The city of Millbury's active transportation plan envisions a safe interconnected and accessible environment for bicyclists, pedestrians, and users of evolving modes of mobility of all ages and abilities. The plan's vision consists of a network that is complete and provides convenient walking and biking facilities to local and regional destinations and amenities. So building on that vision, then there are six goals underneath that vision statement to help guide the implementation of the plan and to help assess as improvements are made to understand how, how well those improvements are helping achieve, achieve the ATP's vision. So the first goal being providing a safe and comfortable active transportation network, then promoting accessibility for all ages and abilities. And I'll talk in a minute with, what I mean by that. Improving bicyclist and pedestrian connectivity to regional facilities, improving access to transit and increasing transit mode share, improving access to local destinations for Millbury residents, employees, and visitors. And then finally, increasing bicyclist and pedestrian mode share in Millbury. So to kind of summarize the plan here in seven, seven actions of what, what the plan is really trying to achieve is providing safe and comfortable bike routes and pedestrian connections to downtown Millbury and El Comino Real. Providing safe and comfortable bike routes through the residential neighborhoods in western Millbury to connect to downtown and connect across to the regional facilities on the west side. Expanding active transportation connections to transit, whether that's Samtrans bus stops or the intermodal station, completing an end-to-end class one path network. So building off of the existing spur trail to complete that network. Improving bicyclist and pedestrian access to regional facilities in the west, specifically the Sawyer Camp Trail, San Andreas Trail over there. Providing bicycle and pedestrian facilities on eastern, east Millbury Avenue. And then providing bicycle and pedestrian facilities across and along the El Comino Real corridor. So those are really kind of the, the big focal points I'd like you to keep in mind as we talk through this and I'll come into the specifics as we go through the presentation. So thinking, going to bend to that first step of the ATP is really understanding what's happening currently, walking and biking in Millbury and, and really focusing in on the facility side of this for the slide is really, there is a strong desire to complete the trail network. So recognizing the gap in the spur trail that currently exists and then also the desire to connect to the Bay Trail or the Sawyer Camp Trail on the east and west side of the city to help give that kind of regional recreational and connectivity benefit. The need to provide safe walking and biking routes to schools and to transit. Connecting the local neighborhoods with the local and regional destinations of getting to those schools, parks, downtown, the intermodal station, and then enhancing crossings and facilities. So recognizing that roadways, specifically Millbury Avenue and El Comino Real were really the focal points for this are places that are not comfortable to walk or bike and are not comfortable to like walk or bike across currently. So how do we help address those needs? So I, I mentioned the all ages and abilities concept early on, and really this is a way of thinking of how, and it began as a way of thinking about biking improvements, but it's really extended into walking as well. Is how do we design a network that is going to appeal to the greatest possibility, or greatest, greatest portion of the population? And all ages and abilities has been referred to as ages eight to 80. And so it's really looking at how do we plan a network that is going to appeal broadly to the population? And based on some research that's been done through national surveys, for biking specifically, there are kind of four different groups of individuals. So on the, on the left here is the no way, no how population. So portion of the population, so that group of people is not interested in biking and is never going to bike. And so, but then when we look across the spectrum on the other side, we have that strong and fearless population. And these are bicyclists that are currently biking and would bike under any conditions. They'll bike up and down El Comino Real, no matter how many high speed vehicles there are. They don't mind taking the lane and kind of being in that high stress environment. But really, when we think of an all ages and abilities network, what we're really focused on is, is that second group, the interested but concerned. So this is about half of the population according to these surveys that have been done nationally. And these, these are folks that are interested in biking for some of their travel but are concerned with current facilities. So they don't feel safe or they don't feel comfortable walking or biking on the roadway, given the current conditions. And so really what we're aiming to do is to provide facilities that would make that population that interested but concerned, make them feel comfortable and safe on the roadway. So appreciate you bearing with me through that. So when we talk about what that actually means in terms of the facilities, so as I mentioned down there, I'll just quickly highlight the strong and fearless. You can see there five lane, high speed roadway, high vehicle volume. That guy riding his bike with, is perfectly fine having that Ford right behind him. He's happy riding his bike there. But you can also see there on the, the bicyclist on the right hand side riding on the sidewalk. And so that's somebody that would fall under, maybe the confident enthused or the interested but concerned where they're not comfortable riding on the roadway in that environment. And so when we think about the facilities that we need to help that person feel comfortable riding on the roadway, we need to change that environment. And so I'll just talk through a couple of the, the interested but concerned facilities. So what's been found is that when post, when speed limits and vehicle traffic is under 25 miles an hour and there's a low volume of traffic, most people feel comfortable riding on those streets because there's a very, there's few interactions with vehicles and usually because of the speed and the volume of traffic, cars are easily able to go around anybody biking along that road. As the speeds increase and the volume increases of traffic up to 30 miles an hour, people feel that are interested but concerned feel comfortable and safe riding in bike lanes or buffered bike lanes. So there's a painted separation between the bike lane and the vehicles. But then as you increase vehicle speeds above 35 miles an hour or traffic volumes become much higher. So in El Comino Real type situation, that's where, for the interest but concern to feel safe and comfortable, there either needs to be a separated bike lane. So you can see there, there's that physical separation of the planter between the vehicle lane and the bicyclist or having a shared use path or off-street path next to the roadway where they're not riding with the vehicle traffic at all. So kind of taking that, that big picture mindset of we're trying to plan for all ages and abilities, I'll start walking through some of those, those improvements. So from the bicycling, again, key improvements, I touched on these a little bit already, so completing the spur trail. Improving El Comino Real for biking and providing parallel low stress routes. So recognizing that some people, no matter what we put on El Comino Real, they still might want to avoid that. They still might not like the high speed and volume of vehicles. And so providing some parallel low stress routes for that biking. Creating east-west connections for biking to get across El Comino Real and connect up to the destinations on the east and west side of the city. And then providing an improvement for crossing US 101 and, and getting over to the Bay Trail. So looking specifically at the Millbury Avenue corridor. So when we step out and look at the big picture here of what that network improvement looks like, so you'll see the green dash lines on the map are new trail recommendations. So some of these are already actively in progress with some of the developments that are occurring, but looking at completing the spur trail and then connecting up to the Bay Trail or over to the Bay Trail, excuse me. Looking at the blue dash line there on El Comino Real. So that's a separated bike lane along El Comino Real. And then the, the dark gray line, dash line, almost black line there is on Millbury Avenue. And I we have that one understudy because currently it's in design and being evaluated for what the actual improvements will be there, but it's some form of a separated or buffered bike lane facility. And then a, the orange lines there are the bike route network that is broadly connecting on low volume and low speed streets to connect up those neighborhoods to the brought, to the other facilities that I mentioned, but also to schools and destinations throughout. So zooming in just to again emphasize kind of the spur trail connection, really closing that gap along the country club from Richmond so that you can travel continuously along the trail from Magnolia all the way up to La Mita and provide that north-south connection. And then within the central area, again, the orange being those low stress connector routes to connect to the schools and recreation and then providing again, the, well, El Comino Real has that separated bike lane facility, also providing parallel facilities for people that don't feel comfortable on that roadway to be able to bike north-south in the city. When we think about walking improvements, so pedestrian improvements for the city, really key focus for Millbury is enhanced intersection crossing treatments. So we heard a lot through the outreach process about not feeling comfortable crossing certain roadways. And so that really drove home the emphasis on these enhanced intersection treatments. So just an example of what something like that could be is here is a pedestrian signal where vehicles are stopped while the pedestrian is crossing. And then you have a refuge island there in the center. So if the pedestrian is not able to make it all the way across on one signal cycle, that they have the opportunity to wait there and then at the next cycle, finish crossing. We've listed out some of the key, key locations for looking at these more enhanced improvements. So Broadway and Meadow Glen, Park Avenue and Magnolia. But really you'll see a long list here of looking at El Comino Real and how to enhance crossings on El Comino Real. And then how do we make it more comfortable to cross the US 101 interchange ramps as well? So looking again at the, the map of all of these improvements. Again, just like for biking, completing the spur trail is a key pedestrian improvement. But then the two magenta lines there are looking at the streetscape improvements along El Comino Real and Broadway. And so what we mean by streetscape is creating an environment that is not just adequate, but is something that is welcoming and inviting for people walking, a place where you know, there's been the addition of landscaping. It's somewhere that people want to stay, park their car, and then walk around it within that area to different shopping areas. So really kind of emphasizing that sense of place and improvement along the corridor. In addition to that, I mentioned those enhanced signal crossings. So looking at how do we improve crossing El Comino Real and the interchanges? And then finally, I see a series of orange dots. And so these are opportunities for crosswalk enhancements throughout the city with the aim really of connecting the various different neighborhoods to the trails, parks, schools, and other destinations like the intermodal station or, or downtown. So I aim towards identifying locations that are going to help cross some of those streets to help, help make those connections. So having now talked a little bit about the big picture plan, I'm going to step a little bit even more in detail. So the active transportation plan does include a few concepts of what these improvements could look like on some of the major streets. I'll just really emphasize here, these are concepts. They are not the final implementation of what the road will look like. Any moving any of these projects, whether it's a simple crosswalk enhancement or the streetscape plan will require additional study, additional outreach to determine in more detail the feasibility and final form of those designs. But these are concepts that have been developed to kind of emphasize that all ages and abilities approach to improving some of the key, key projects that's in the plan. And then finally, I'll be talking about a couple of facilities where these are Caltrans facilities. So it will require coordination and approval by Caltrans to make those improvements. So El Comino Real being State Route 82, any improvement along or across El Comino Real would require their participation and approval. And then crossing the US 101 interchange on Millbury Avenue. So I'll talk through briefly two concepts for El Comino Real. As I mentioned, the separated bike lane, the streetscape enhancements. So because of all the competing needs along El Comino Real from transit, driving, blocking, biking, there are trade-offs involved in making any improvement to the corridor. So this is a concept that's presenting a protected or separated bike lane. So the bike lane, you can see there on the outside of the road in each direction with a, the parking lane, then inside of that, so creating that buffer between vehicle lanes and the bike lane. And so this parking protected bike lane allows you to keep parking along the length of the corridor. But it does require that we do take one through vehicle lane in each direction. So the road has been narrowed down from six lanes to four lanes. But that allows that landscaping to happen along the corridor with the wider parking area and the protection between the bike lane and the vehicle lanes. You can also see with the bright green paint there and some of the striping, the enhanced crossings at the intersection to emphasize the conflict points between vehicles and bicyclists as well as the improvements also have narrowed the footprint of the roadway to reduce the crossing distance for pedestrians to provide a shorter distance to get across the road. So the second concept for El Comino Real, so again, this is still maintaining a protected bike lane along the corridor, but if it's more important to maintain the through vehicle lanes in order to have that protected bike lane facility, but still maintain those six vehicle lanes, whether that's you know, a, a bus rapid transit lane and two vehicle lanes or, or six vehicle lanes that would require the removal of parking. So this concept is showing that you'll see because of the lane width requirements, you'll see that the separation between the bicyclist and the vehicle lane is also a little bit narrower, which means that there's less opportunity for that landscaping and kind of aesthetic improvements that were in the other concept as well. Similar to the other concept, though, we do still are able to do a lot at the intersection itself to improve visibility and highlight those conflict points for people walking and biking. And shorten crossing distances. The third concept, I just wanted to illustrate the Millbury Avenue concept. And so again, this is currently understudy. So the final form may be different. But in evaluating it, because of the alignment of the two bridge decks going over US 101 and over the rail line, there is an interesting facility need here to accommodate biking across the road. And so you'll see on the very west end between El Comino Real and Rollins Road, there is kind of that separated bike lane or buffered bike lane, depending on how it's implemented on each side of the roadway. But then as you go east towards Bay Shore, the bike lane does transition down to a two-way separated facility on one side of the roadway. So because of the alignment of the bridge deck, there's a need to keep that all on one side to keep costs under control. And in addition to that, then also improving the pedestrian and bicycle crossing, some of that conflict marking and improvements to the sign-in and striping at the interchange ramps and alignment of the ramps to slow speeds down so that vehicles are accelerating on the ramp and not before the ramp. And then enhancing again, the intersection footprint itself for people walking and biking. And again, just like the Millbury, first Millbury concept that would require taking one vehicle lane along the corridor. And that was, did go through some preliminary operational analysis to make sure that that was feasible, given the volume of traffic along corridor there. given the volume of traffic along corridor there. So stepping away from the capital improvements, I mentioned that this plan is both capital improvements and supporting programs. So looking at the supporting programs for the city, really focus on safe routes to school and safe routes to transit programs. Being good education and encouragement opportunities. These programs are aimed at working with schoolchildren or people that are currently taking or interested in taking transit to provide education around how to do that safely and comfortably. And encouragement in those programs to provide resources to them to allow them to feel comfortable doing so. Second there, along with any bike improvement along the roadway to make it easier to get somewhere. We also need to support that with bike parking so that when they get there, there's somewhere to leave their bike and lock it and keep it safely and secure, safe and secure. Additionally, with that is the need for wayfinding. So how do we inform somebody that's walking or biking of how the best connection to make between two destinations? So somebody's biking, trying to bike from the spur trail to the Sawyer Camp Trail. How do we direct them when to turn and how to navigate through the bike network to get to that destination? And then finally, regional coordination. So just recognizing the city of Millbrae's bike network and pedestrian improvements don't exist in isolation. So the plan is consistent with CCAG's recent update to their, their bike plan. But also making sure that the city is continuing to coordinate with Caltrans and then making sure that the plan remains consistent with neighboring jurisdiction plans. So that if any changes to their network occur, that the plan is flexible to help address and connect to those new opportunities for regional connections. So before I hand things back over to Nestor here, I just wanted to briefly walk through some of the comments that we got through the outreach process starting in July. So first were two letters, one from Caltrans and one from the Sierra Club. So a request then from Caltrans was to clarify El Camino Real as a state route. And the emphasis that it is subject to the Caltrans project development processes in the plan. And then they also asked for some additional references in the plan to Caltrans's own bike and pedestrian plans. And the up, and an update to the CCAG language. And so those changes have been incorporated in the draft that's currently, currently available on the website. And then they also just emphasized that the ATP's goals and actions were consistent with Caltrans planning documents as well. For the Sierra Club letter, there was a request to add language into the ATP to address sustainable green streets. So that's green infrastructure. So adding specific language into the plan to address that. But then also as part of their letter was that they were supportive of the plan and its recommendations beyond that request for that green infrastructure addition. Summarizing the additional comments received as part of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and the open house. Was just the emphasis on existing safety concerns on and crossing El Camino Real. An emphasis that connecting to the Sawyer Camp Trail is really critical for regional connectivity. There were a few questions or concerns around micro mobility and how that would be handled by the plan. Questions around transit and transit connections. And then concerns about potential parking removal with improvements and their impact on the neighborhoods. And so again, as I mentioned, there's no specific recommendations in this plan. But seeing those two concepts, I think of the potential for parking removal, just acknowledging that that is a concern. And then there was also a couple of requests for site-specific crossing improvements that I could, that were also made as part of that part of the comments. And so with that, I think I'll hand it back over to Nestor to talk us through implementation.
Right. Thank you, Matt. As Matt mentioned, the plan does identify potential improvements for bicycle and pedestrian improvements, and it also provides cost estimates for these. For bicycle improvements, those total add about 14 million while pedestrian improvements total around 20 million. The city would use the ATP to prioritize implementation as, as funding is secured. The document does also include a section that, that identifies potential funding sources. And I just want to make clear that, that through any recommendation that the planning commission would make tonight, that, that it wouldn't have any, any fiscal impact at this point. Next slide, please. I'm in terms of timeline. So as I mentioned earlier, the draft plan was released for public comment and environmental review comment back in July 19th of 2021. This plan was then taken to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Subcommittee during their August 25th meeting. So we presented the plan. We received comments from the members of the, of the subcommittee as well as members of the public. The members of the public then had another chance to, to provide comment at our ATP open house, which we held on the first of September. On the first of September was actually also the day where, where environmental review comments closed. Then here we are tonight at the Plumb Public Planning Commission Public Meeting where we're seeking approval of a recommendation to the city council to then, city council would then adopt, formally adopt to the plan at a, at a later meeting. Next slide. Um, so next steps. The next step is for the ATP to be presented along with any comments received from the planning commission and any additional, additional feedback on the public comments received up to this, up to receive to date to the city council, which would be sometime later this year, hopefully. We're hoping for October 2021 where they would then review it as a final review and then and an act, an action that, that would be a formal adoption of the plan. The next slide, please. So with that said, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution, recommending the Millbrae City Council adopt the active transportation plan. Next slide, please. With that said, that concludes our presentation. Staff is available for questions. And, and as you know, so is Matt with Gibson.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you. Just going through the active transportation plan, it's clear a lot of work, hard work and time has gone into it and very well done. So thank you very much for doing that. Before we launch into questions, I just, I'm curious as to, do we have a lot of people who are here for public comment? Members of the public wishing to speak?
It looks so far like we have one hand raised.
We have one hand raised. Okay. That's fine. Thank you. So I'll just throw this out to commissioners. Would we'd like to just go ahead and go into a discussion? Or would you, should we just hear from the member of the public who's here? Do you have a preference either?
I would prefer to hear from the public to start.
Okay. Others feel the same? That's okay. So thank you. So let's go ahead with, then we can open up for I guess public comment.
Great. Jean Wong. Please unmute.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Chairman Zhao and Joe and commissioners. I'd like to thank everyone for their great job on the transportation plan. It looks very thorough and I can see a lot of work has gone into it. I'd like the commission to consider adding another intersection of, for enhancement to the list of intersection for pedestrian improvements. The intersection of Taylor and the west side of El Camino does not have a crosswalk. I understand from Public Works, because I've raised this issue with them previously, that the current configuration does not support installation of a crosswalk without some major reconfiguration of the design and would, would, would be a long-term project that would include both the state of California and the city of Millbrae in order to even have anything considered along those lines. So even without a crosswalk, pedestrians are constantly crossing the intersection of Taylor and going south, Taylor and El Camino going south. It's a very dangerous intersection as, as people are trying to navigate crossing the crosswalk and, and trying to avoid the traffic that's moving through this intersection. So the Public Works folks recommended that a solution to this problem might be simply just adding a, a sign to direct people to walk up instead of crossing El Camino, Taylor at El Camino to walk up to Broadway, cross Al, cross Taylor on Broadway, come back to El Camino, and then therefore they end up on the right side of the street. I think, you know, people being people, they're not going to do that. And even with the signup, people will continue to cross that intersection. And it's very dangerous. And I'm surprised that with the amount of people already crossing that intersection illegally, if you will, that there hasn't been more pedestrian accidents there. So I'd like to suggest that the, the plan includes some sort of initiative to improve that intersection if it hasn't already been added. So I think the, one of you in, in the update mentioned that there were some other suggestions for crosswalk inner improvements. And I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that this particular intersection is included in that. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wong. Anybody else? Yeah. Okay. Should we, yes, Commissioner Quigg, you're muted. You're still muted. Commissioner Quigg, you're muted.
Taylor and El Camino. I'm trying to visualize Taylor and El Camino. Can someone help me visualize?
It's the Chevron to the Valero gas station that's
And there's a problem crossing that street, I guess. They're going on to El Camino. They're crossing it east and west.
Is that Yes, I, I think that's what, crossing El Camino at Taylor. So there's no crosswalk.
I think she was also talking about crossing Taylor at El Camino too, the north, south route. It was also part of it. Was I mistaken on that?
That's what I understood.
There is a, I look at the satellite picture of the intersection, there is a crosswalk connecting Chevron side to the Valero side. It is not a very good looking crosswalk. It's not well marked, but there are lines across showing a crosswalk. There's also a hashed crosswalk crossing El Camino to the other side where one of the new developments is. And that one's not a controlled one. There's not a light there like there are at some of the other crosswalks. So there is a safety issues related to that long crossing without a control light. Has something changed since the satellite imagery has been captured? Have we lost a crosswalk there?
Isn't that where the the little small street is? The frontage road?
It's where the frontage road begins is on the south side in front of the Valero.
Okay. Where the bank is. No. With the bank. I know there is one intersection in there, north and south. It's very confusing. At one point they had some kind of a, a rail there saying you couldn't really cross there. Does anybody remember that? And then they took that off. Well, we should look at that.
Yeah. So that's at El Camino, it doesn't extend to the east side. It goes into that universal supply, the hardware store. So.
I just looked, I looked at this, the street view and actually I'm, I'm wrong. There is a controlled light at that intersection.
That, that's why I'm confused on why there is an issue. And Taylor is the one that goes through onto the other side, right? Maybe staff can give us a little bit more background.
Staff can go into that. So do we have any other members of the public? We said no right at this point.
No, not at this time.
So I'd like to kind of hear from commissioners if you prefer, if you had, if everybody has a lot of questions, we can just go either one by one commissioner, or we can just break it down in topics in terms of how we go.
Through the chair?
Yes, Mr. Mano.
Chair, Joe, with the commission, would, would the commission like to entertain a motion to close a public hearing at this time?
I wasn't sure if we'd want to keep it open a little bit longer just because we might have more people coming in. I don't know how, how did the other commit, because if we do cut close, if we are going to close public comment, we do want to, moving forward, we're going to be actually asking for a motion and the second voting on it to close it. Are we ready to do that?
This is not a public hearing, is it?
It's not a public hearing, but it's a public comment on
Yeah.
Something that we're doing.
You have to close anything.
I was informed that we should be doing it.
If you were informed, then
That's a new, new process. I know. So I know we haven't done it before, but, but again, I wasn't sure if it might be premature. So that's my only concern.
To the chair, may I ask that Jean Wong be allowed to reaffirm her, what her question was? She has raised her hand again.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Del Negro. I think that would be good if we can have Ms. Wong please clarify what you're referring to.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I, I hope I got the intersection correct. It's the intersection where there's the 711. Is that, that's not Taylor?
No.
What street is that then?
That is Hillcrest.
No.
No, that's not Hillcrest.
Staff, can you help us with this?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting the streets mixed up. But is it Hillcrest? There is an inner, there is a, there is a four-way stops, there's signals there. Now.
That's Hillcrest.
Then it must be Hillcrest.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I misspoke then. It's Hillcrest then.
Hillcrest going south, nor, north, south or crossing El Camino?
It's Hillcrest going, crossing Hillcrest going south. So if you are standing at the 711 and you want to cross the street to cross, you want to cross Hillcrest to get to the other side, then there, there is no crosswalk there. The other three legs of that intersection all have crosswalks. I understand the reason that there isn't because of the way the lights are configured, configured because Public Works explained it to me. But I, I think it's, it's a very dangerous intersection because there is no crosswalk. So the cars come up to the intersection, but pedestrians are crossing anyway. So they're looking out for traffic coming from El Camino to, to Hillcrest and the traffic from Hillcrest crossing, crossing El Camino. So it's a very complicated intersection.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to explain.
Thank you. So going back, do we want to go ahead and close the public comment session or shall we? How do, what is the pleasure of the commission?
Chair Joe, I just recommend perhaps there are a couple of other people in the, in the audience, given the opportunity to to speak if they wish, maybe a few seconds.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak, members of the audience? Otherwise, we will be, we will be closing the public comment section. So either speak now or we'll have to just move on. Anybody?
No.
Okay. So seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public comment section of this item?
Move to close the public comment.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second.
We have two seconds. So can we have a vote on that?
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong? Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
And Chair Joe?
Yes. So now we're closing the public comments. So we'll go ahead and open it up for the commission to discuss and ask questions. I, again, I, I had asked this question, would you prefer to just, each person just come out with whatever questions they have? Or would you prefer to go kind of topic, more topically? Commissioner Quigg?
You know what? I think the act of transportation was very well written. And I don't know if somebody has a lot of questions, then this would be the time for them to speak up of the commissioners. I have limited comments. So I think we should just see who's ready to speak.
Okay. Okay, that, that's fine. One comment that I, I'd like to start off with is that, as I said, I think it was Okay, okay, that, that's fine. One comment that I'd like to start off with is that, as I said, I think it was very well done. One thing I would like to see, if it's not too difficult, is a table of contents, that that would have been very helpful just to be able to break down the sections and also a list of the figures. So that's one suggestion that I'd like to make. I think it would make it a lot more accessible to people reading it, trying to go through it and trying to refresh, because I was flipping back and forth, started my post-it stuff going. So I would really, I think that would be very helpful to have. So having said that, I will, I guess, just see who would like to go ahead and start us off then with the commissioners. Commissioner Del Negro?
I will have a lot of questions and I don't want to dominate, so I'm kind of letting other big, buddy go. I've been actively involved in this project and I still.
You're the fierce, you're the fearless.
I'm a fearless biker, I'll be honest.
fearless biker on El Camino. So we're really glad that you're here to help us do this. Okay, well, Commissioner Quigg, would you like to start since you're, you said you didn't have a lot of questions to start?
I don't have a lot of questions and I was relying on our new planning commissioner, Del Negro, because I know for years he's been on this BPAC subcommittee and I thought he might be able to share a lot with us on that. I went through it, I thought everything looked really good. My biggest concern is where we're going to get all this money to really implement the project. There was a couple of very small things. I'm glad that Park Boulevard is on this because I live in North Millbrae and between Park Boulevard and Park Place, that triangle to me and the fact that Cappuccino High School is right there. It is a very complicated intersection and you have to be extremely careful. So I was very happy to see that one was on the list, so thank you for that. As far as Jean Wong's comments, I think I can visualize exactly what she's saying. And it does seem clumsy, I totally agree. And there was, actually, they don't want you to cross there. I think that's why the crosswalk is not there. And yeah, they want you to go up and around. I don't know how you can fix it, but I personally feel that that is not my expertise. And if the engineers and the traffic planners recommend it the way it is, that we should move forward. But I, I do agree with Jean Wong. I think I said something about that once to staff also. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Sure, we can always come back to you if anything else comes up. Just a question of the staff regarding that, just looking at figure six, which has the bicycle and pedestrian involved crashes, that intersection actually, I mean, even without looking at that graph, but with that chart, that intersection actually is a big problem spot. So is there something where we can address that or at least add it in here as something to look at in the future? How would that work? Any of the staff comment on that?
There's Andrew.
Hi, this is Andrew with Public Works Engineering. I believe we have a concept already designed in as part of the ATP. It's similar to, I guess, intersection in Berkeley on Sheddak Avenue. It's actually part of the ATP and maybe Matt can elaborate, but we do have a concept that will solve that problem.
And where is it in the ATP?
I believe it's, I believe it's on page forty-six.
Oh, yes.
Figure thirteen, page forty-six, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I did see this one. So, so there's, so that's good that it is actually addressed in here as a concept, potential concept. Okay, any other commissioners like to go or shall we just go ahead with Commissioner Del Negro?
Actually, yeah.
Commissioner Wong?
Let me take some time off. A lot of comments, but I'll try to keep them succinct and. I have is, one is connectivity and looking at a major plant, if you look at like.
Commissioner Wong, I'm sorry, your, your audio is really coming in and out.
Okay, let me call in and then.
Okay, why don't we, I think Commissioner Davis was going to speak, so is it, we'll go ahead to Commissioner Davis while we're waiting for you to come back in.
Hi, so might, might be a couple of questions, might just be some random comments in no particular order. First is a huge thank you to everybody who worked on this project, the staff, the consultant commission, everybody who did this. Thank you very much. It's lovely. It's a ton of work. Question, I think I had a question. Oh, what happens at the end, the north end of the Spur Trail? I mean, I know it connects all, it connects all of Millbrae when we finally bridge that gap in it, but then what happens? Is there any way to get it into San Bruno since several times we mentioned connecting to our neighbors north and south? I don't know if you want to answer that or just like take some notes and address it later, just curious. Let's see, oh, the, the plans to improve, potential plans, just ideas or concepts to talk about El Camino, whether you have a protected bike lane or with the planting or with no parking or include the parking but still protect the bike lane. Is there any thought then also of widening the sidewalks on El Camino? Just curious, not just curious if that's part of it as well. When I go back to that one phrase somebody used, I think it was for bicycling, but welcoming and inviting. You know, I would love El Camino for pedestrians in particular to be more welcome and inviting, so I'm wondering if that's part of it. And then there was mention of the green infrastructure concept of always including that. And it feels like that's something that for almost every project we'll do in the future, that just needs to be a matter of due course, not an afterthought, not a, wouldn't it be nice to have? But green infrastructure planning should be part of virtually everything we do. And I sure hope we have a dedicated grant writer for this, moving forward. And I think that was it. Yep.
Thank you. Did staff want to address, take on any of these or?
Through the chair, please. I think in terms of the El Camino Real specifically, the comment about the sidewalks and maybe Roscoe or Darcy can, can add a little bit to it, but I believe since we're also working on the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan, that would be, that would be a part of, of that effort, a little, a little bit more than, than, than this one. And then, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, that makes sense.
Oh, great. And then as far as the green infrastructure, we do have a, the specific green infrastructure plan that I think kind of touches on, on a lot of the comments that, that people have made about, about including that in this plan specifically.
So perhaps that, that could be one of the recommendations that we have to add that green infrastructure, green infrastructure plan directly. Where would this fit in this document? Is it in the beginning with the?
I think it's already in there.
Is it explicit? I mean, it does talk about, something about green, but not as explicitly in terms of the green infrastructure. What do you call it? Sustainable green streets? Anyone? Everybody's quiet today. The staff, where would that go?
I, I think maybe Matt can have a little better of an idea for that since he worked on the planet a bit more, a bit more closely than I, than I did.
Yeah, happy, happy to talk to it. So I think probably it would go under kind of the goals or actions section of the plan, especially because the city does already have a green infrastructure plan where we could add in another goal or action in that area, just a reference that any improvement going forward should consider the green infrastructure plan and sustainable green streets. Obviously, that would get words missed, but that's a potential way to make that connection. I think it's already been addressed through that green infrastructure plan already, but it would just be making that, that obvious connection.
And just to add to that a little bit, there's also the section on, I believe it's page seven or so, regulatory framework and related plans, and it has a subsection of regional and local, and it might, might be a good fit there. Regional, local, start on page eight or so.
That's where I was, I was actually thinking as well. Might be good to reference it there. Okay, so that's one that we can, kind of when we summarize all of this, we can kind of circle back and see where the commissioners are on that. And Commissioner Davis, did you have more? That was pretty much it for now?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wong, if hopefully we got your sound.
All right, I'm calling in on the phone too. Okay, great. Most important comment I have is, is that to address those issues about the El Camino Real and the coordination with Caltrans and even 101 test, I would suggest from an engineering perspective, just to maybe make it an addendum to this document and put the different projects into phases, for example, like neighborhood projects versus El Camino Real projects, 101 projects. And then we can total the costs for each and separate them and put them in phases so that any coordination work and monies and funds, if we get funding from state or share the cost with Caltrans, then we can separate these different phases of the projects and move along ahead. It might be one way to move forward with the project, not to hold it up and have a lot of confusion about the different projects and phasing and coordination. That's the main suggestion I would have. And then also, as you noted in one of the slides, is that it needs a lot of prioritization. There's specific intersections as Ms. Wong pointed out, where there's heavy traffic. For example, another one might be El Camino and Magnolia, where a lot of kids cross over from the neighborhoods to get over to Mills High School. And so these key intersections there and as she mentioned, Hillcrest, arterials like Hillcrest where there's heavy traffic, Millbrae Avenue to the west, Helen Drive up to Larkspur, those intersections where there's always kids crossing the streets and heavy, heavy pedestrian along with El Camino and Broadway. I think those would be good priorities. So prioritization and phasing. Third comment is about connectivity. There is some arterials, as I was mentioning, not only for traffic, but I can imagine for walking and pedestrian and biking pathways. One is, is for example, like from the TOD project for the BART, the gateway project, there's a, on the maps, there's a development, it's green, it's a shared use path. It's kind of interesting because it's, it goes along Hemlock, but I don't believe there's a path there. And it shows that it cuts all the way over to the northern part of the neighborhoods from the Hemlock area up to the Monterey area. And I don't believe that there is a walking path there, so it may need to be looked at because I think that in order to get from that BART TOD project, you'd have to walk along the streets and then along Hemlock. And at the end of Hemlock, there's a little crossing for the train tracks. And then it goes over to Monterey neighborhoods too. So this walking path on the east side of the El Camino might need some development. And so the connectivity, like Jean was mentioning, I imagine that once the gateway is in, and there's a lot of people there, they'd probably be walking a lot along through those neighborhoods and then across Hillcrest, so that intersection might be even more busy. And then also connecting, connectivity from the Spur Trail. And the key is getting up to the Sawyer Camp Trail, so if there's for recreation and biking. You know, I think that the Spur Trail going from the Bay Trail, going along Spur Trail up to Larkspur might be good to develop Larkspur as a biking route, so that might be the key way to get up to Skyline. And then along Skyline, even though there's biking trail along Skyline, it's just kind of an older bike lane, it's just marked white. But might, there's no development in this plan for the Skyline Boulevard. And I could see that going from Larkspur over to the Sawyer Camp Trail's head to the south. So that's, that might complete this bay to Sawyer Camp Trail.
So Commissioner Wong, before you proceed, did the staff, is the staff keeping up with that or are there specific suggestions that? Because some of these I think are actually in here and then some are not necessarily, so I just want to make sure that we're following what you're.
We are taking actively notes, yeah.
Okay, okay, go ahead. Sorry, keep playing.
Let's see, two, two last comments. One is Helen Drive. It's a very wide street. There's heavy traffic there. I can see might be considered for pedestrian or biking improvements because there's a lot of heavy traffic going along through Helen Drive from Metal Glen all the way up to, is it to Tioga? One final comment is that for the downtown area, I don't see much development for biking in the Broadway area, which I would really like to see because one of the purposes of biking would be the function of like getting to the store. And I'm always riding my bike to Safeway or Trader Joe's and I noticed there's no convenient biking. I think they're not even allowed to have biking there, so I have to just jump off the bike, walk, but there's not even biking parking lot. One of the cities that I come to mind, it's very bike friendly and very developed, is Copenhagen. Went to Copenhagen, the, the northern Europe, tons of biking, very green city. There's these enormous bike parking lots outside these facilities. Not to say that we're going to have enormous bike parking facility, but we have nothing over on Broadway. And if we want people to bike into town or even get people off the Bay Trail and come to our town, you know, we need to escort them. I think we'd need to develop that and have BART bike parking in that area so people can shop there and take their bikes in. And that would be, even for kids, you know, that would be great. So those are my key comments, but again, key thing is prioritization and phasing and separate out the El Camino and the 101 projects with the neighborhood projects and prioritizing them.
Thank you. Would, do staff, would like to staff, address any of these or are we okay to just continue?
I, I believe in terms of, in terms of the, the bike facility or lack of in Broadway and, and Matt can maybe step in and provide a little bit more detail. But I think the thought is to have the perhaps separated bike facilities on El Camino and then on either side of it have kind of parallel routes as well, where there, there's a little bit less traffic.
I'll just add in that that segment where there is no recommendation, it is part of the streetscape plan that is currently being, being developed. And so the goal is to make that area a more friendly and inviting place for walking and biking. The roadway is so narrow there and the speeds are so low that there isn't necessarily the need to do anything to create an environment that is comfortable. Obviously, there's a lot of going on there in terms of traffic, but the space does not allow us necessarily to do, you know, a, a bike lane alongside the vehicle lane on that roadway. So it's partially a space constraint, but then also the environment in and of itself, we hope, will be an environment where people are expecting. You know, people are driving slow because they're expecting to be interacting with people that are walking or biking in that area where the routes to either side are to help people connect more broadly to the city. That was the intent behind it.
Thank you. Why don't Commissioner Del Negro, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, well, I would like first comment to Commissioner Davis, the end of, the north end of the Spur Trail. It actually has a crossing on Lamita that leads into the actual Ginopera Sarah Park.
It actually has a crossing on Lamita that leads into the actual Juniparisera Park. There's a gate right there, we have in the past discussed with. The county and the park system about opening that gate, so actually our spur trail, if you walked it north, would actually lead you into and through. Juniparisera Park, which gives you a much longer route to even walk than just what we're providing.
That would be awesome.
That is a really big benefit.
That would be great.
To Commissioner Wong, you know, you pointed out Magnolia and Nobre Avenue crossing, that's a really important one. I completely concur that more attention needs to be put on that one intersection. And I know that a member of the public, Ron Raquel, who's shown up to. Very many of our park and rec and our bike and pedestrian advisory committees will appreciate that comment. The Hemlock discussion you had, you know, that's an equitability issue for me. The communities down there are not served as well with access to the BART station, Caltrain station. And having the Hemlock access open and maintained, no matter what happens to high speed rail is going to be very important for those communities. Especially for those people that are not high end users, who are not the strong and fearless and who will need access. To the Caltrain station from the north side without using El Camino. So I appreciated that comment about, you know, Hemlock and making sure there's not just a bike, but also pedestrian, a walkway along that. As far as Larkspur, I will suggest, I do live in, in, in the Meadows area, Larkspur is extremely steep. Even the strong and fearless, Fear Larkspur. It is a very hard hill decline, unfortunately.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Wong, I think you need to mute. There, sorry.
SFPUC unfortunately has no access to their, their, their territory, their land up near the water tanks. Where there is actually easier grade road out there and there's also a tunnel that goes underneath the 280 that leads. Over to the trail system on the west side directly, you know, unfortunately is through SFPUC land, we don't have access. The other access point is actually in San Bruno using Crystal Springs Road, that is a little less steep of a grade than Larkspur. But could allow a trail system like the spur trail that comes up in a Juniparisera Park to use Crystal Springs. To get up to the trail and that's probably a more realistic connection of the spur to the San Andreas and Sawyer Trails. I also would like to see all new developments that are done downtown, they actually have a requirement of providing. Some level of bike and pedestrian parking and access. Or at least some funding towards it as part of their projects, you know, that is a very good point to Commissioner Wong's. Pointing out that the difficulties in parking downtown, the parking can't just be over on Magnolia. Like we do on the corner of Taylor and Magnolia, we have a parking for bikes, that's a long ways for bicyclists. To leave their bike away when they have groceries and they're already going back and forth, particularly people use bike shoes, don't walk long distances. Okay, some of my questions. I'll start off with, I did not see. A graph of Milbury Ave new and El Camino intersection, I know that will be a highly contentious intersection. Particularly, I worry that. From a car perspective, that when you sit in a long line on Milbury Ave heading north. And wanting to turn right onto El Camino Real with a single right hand turn lane. That that builds up a lot of pressure and push to drive quickly through that intersection in a single right hand turn lane. And across a wide intersection that pedestrians would like to cross. I actually believe that taking less pressure by actually putting two right hand turn lanes there. And regulating it by a light is actually in a pedestrian's best interest. Because you'll have less pressure at that intersection by cars.
So Commissioner Del Negro, which intersection are you referring to?
Milbury Avenue going north, when you hit El Camino Real, you come down from over the train track. There's a single right hand turn lane now, there really needs to be two to take the pressure off that intersection. Get cars through quickly and separate lights so that pedestrian crossing is not in alignment with the right hand turn. Let's see, one thing I do have a very big problem with is on page forty eight, the design. Looking at the. Protected bike on the other side of parking, I know it seems like it's a great idea because you're keeping the bike safe, you're actually making bicyclists. Bicyclists less safe by hiding in behind parked cars. I've dealt with this over the years, even in San Diego with bike designs on streets. I hate to see anytime that you cannot see a bicyclist on the road because there's parked cars between you and the bikes. You'll come in an intersection, bicyclists will drive twenty five miles an hour on a bike down El Camino Real. And they coming out that bike lane with cars between you and the people wanting to make a right hand turn, it's a very dangerous situation. I will not want to see a protected bike lane on the other side of, of parallel parking. I would much prefer to see all the other designs in here where you had a parking against the sidewalk and a bike lane. Protected or not is okay, but it's better off to have a bike lane and less lanes to slow down traffic. Than to hide your bike lane on the other side of parking. They did this in my hometown of Ojai, California recently with a quick strike program, it's a disaster. It is not working out well and we've had more people get injured now. Than they ever did before they did this implemented design of having a protected bike lane on the other side of parking. Okay, one thing I did notice that is missing. Is the 280. To enter or exit Milbury on Skyline, you actually buy a bicyclist if it's after hours or. When they close the San Andreas or the Sawyer Trail, which does happen. You actually are required to use the 280 on ramps and actually bike along the 280. You actually bike the 280 from Larkspur to the exit on the highway thirty five and imagine doing that on a bicycles. Even the fearless like myself don't like doing it, but we do it because it's the only way to go. At the top of Hillcrest, you actually have to get on the 280 north. And you actually ride along that till you get to Truesdale. You know, we do not provide access between Hillcrest and Milbury Avenue and Truesdale. As far as bicyclists and it is a major problem that this is probably one of the only places in the entire Bay Area. We are required to use an interstate freeway as a bicyclist. And this isn't pointed out in our plan and it definitely should be pointed out as a major problem for Milbury that Caltrain has to address. And in addition to that, yeah, I would like to see an element of parking. And how we're going to manage parking at the San Andreas and at the Sawyer Trailheads. It is a becoming a larger and larger problem over time, you know, this is a pedestrian issue, you know, people like to go up there and walk. There's a lot of parking going on on the top of the hill there, something needs to be done about it to make it safer. For the interaction of the pedestrians and people getting on and off the freeway as well as that parking. I would like to ask, there's a section ten on the. Environmental review section as far as bridges and water. There is an element here that is actually inaccurate statement. I believe the actual spur trail has actually goes over a creek. At the back of one of our parks at Rotary Park. There's actually a bridge that needs to be built to finish the spur trail that's in the design. So it, you know, at some point it'd be nice to have that accomplished, but in this actual plan, it says that there is no. Interaction between bridges and creeks and rivers when we actually do in the plan have an interaction that needs to be covered. I'd ask that, how are we going to go back and deal with that in the future if the time comes to actually build a bridge over the creek? Let's see. For the Meadows community, you know, the spur trail comes up, it goes right along the Meadows community, but there's no access point. That's easy from the actual Meadow. At the end of Banbury, there is an easement, I understand for the water district and there's an easement next to it. That I understand that Milbury has that gives you access to the spur trail at the end of Banbury, which leads directly down to Meadows School. Getting access there for the potential of fire equipment, safety equipment, even if the spur trail had a fire issue. We need more access points simply to the spur trail and I'd like to see us get an access point at the end of Banbury. To allow the spur trail access midway through where fire equipment and safety equipment get through. And the Meadows community can have access to the spur trail without going all the way up and down Lamita. Or going down the hill towards the bottom of Larkspur at the very end. So I'm going down my list. I didn't see any, any element on Murchison between Magnolia and Mills High School. Is it? Mentioned in here somewhere that I missed about creating a bike lane that connects all the way up to Mills High School from Magnolia and possibly up to Spring Valley. Just a bike route all the way up. El Camino Real, one of the biggest problems I see is that people cross, no matter where you tell them to cross. No matter how much you try to give them safe crossings, they still cross mid block. We need to put an element that actually has curbing pedestrian behavior. With some type of barrier system in the center and it needs to be essential designed to the element of El Camino Real. That's really a critical for safety because even today with those flashing lights, you see people mid, mid block still running across six lanes of traffic. I have a question about page twenty two on the overcross of the 101. I know that there's a bike lane that'll be provided in a pedestrian lane. Will it be no bike access, will it actually say no bikes allowed on the road? For the actual way through the lanes of travel over. Because you will find that the strong and fearless don't like sometimes to use mixed pedestrian bike lanes and may still want to use. Milbury Avenues right of way going over the freeway.
Should we give some time for staff? Oh, okay, maybe we can give some time for staff to just start going down the line. Saying maybe I should have stopped, we should have taken it one by one, but. But thank you for a lot of great feedback and questions, so. If any of the staff want to go ahead and start out kind of addressing.
Also noted on the comment regarding, I mean noted on everything, but specifically on the comment regarding the parking, I know Camino. That proposal, it's, it's again, it's, it's just concepts, it's nothing kind of final or anything, so, so I just wanted to make that. Make that clear, but the comments aren't noted, of course.
Okay, so, but there were some questions that I think Commissioner Del Negro brought up, so if we are. This is an action item, so we do need to be taking an action on this and if we, if there are things that we would like to see. Kind of changed or added, do we just make a recommendation and approve it with our comments and then that goes to city council or? How does this work?
I, I believe the, the action would be to, to take a recommendation of approval and then, and then taking that to, to city council with, with comments. But maybe Roscoe or Darcy could kind of provide a bit more detail on that.
Yeah, hi. So we've, we have been capturing all the comments, it, it is a lot to type up. Kind of as verbatim as possible, but we've been doing our best. And we will prepare a document that includes all the comments, much like you see, saw attached to the staff report, the last attachment. And so we could approach it that way where we will prepare. The meeting minutes with. These comments, there were some questions I heard that Mr. Broughton might be able to answer quickly. But some of them, you know, we just have to research more and dig deeper into them. Because I heard a lot of comments about some Caltrans facilities or other jurisdictional facilities that the city. May be able to have some advisory items in our plan, but would not be able to have really action items. Since that land would be under the jurisdiction of a different agency. Who would strive to coordinate with them, but. We are having conversations, for example, with Caltrans, we have a meeting this week. We'll be talking about the El Camino Real design as we put the finishing touches on the streetscape plan. But some of these things, we're just going to have to go back and, and, and work through the other agencies on them.
Okay, but we would be basically taking the, approving the ATP with comments, is that?
Yes, yes.
Without seeing it adjusted. And then there were some questions though, Mr. Broughton can maybe address.
Yeah, I can, sorry, I'm gonna be looking down on my notes here just to try and make sure I address everything. Just encourage, please, if I do skip over anything, please. Refresh my memory. I think the requirement to provide bike pit access and parking as part of the condition of approval for any development, I think is something that is. At least partially covered through the supporting recommendations in the ATP, it is something that would require. Changes to the city's. Existing code and policies in order to, you know, establish those. In terms of how they would turn into the conditions of approval for any new development, that's. Something where we are making that recommendation to include that, but it is not necessarily. It, it would be something beyond the ATP to include that as well. For Milbury Avenue and El Camino Real, so we did not prepare a concept for every. Intersection, but the streetscape plan will be looking at kind of the whole corridor to that and. I can assure you that we are not avoiding any intersection, we recognize that. El Camino Real and Milbury is a tricky one just because it is the interchange entrance, but. There are already to the south improvements going on to narrow the roadway. Along El Camino Real, so we don't foresee that it be something that. Is infeasible to do so, but we do recognize that there is some capacity constraints that will need to be worked out in terms of the actual. Implemented design, whether that ends up being something. That an additional right turn lane, I have some conflicted feelings. Around that just because it would mean increasing the crossing distance for pedestrians, which increases the potential for a crash. But that is something that we would, you know, that will be getting worked out and would be. Part of implementing that project would actually be studying how that moves forward. You are correct that we do not directly address the I two eighty ramps and that is something that we could add as kind of a issue. In, in the upfront part of the plan. I'm hoping that our network is helping to address some of those connectivity issues, but definitely would appreciate.
Yeah, I asked on that element, consider that we do have some power here that doesn't revolve Caltrans to a degree. And that is connecting Vallejo Drive around the three hundred and sixty. To the on-ramp access point behind the three ninety five building. There is land there and it would be a very short distance. Of access through those eucalyptus trees and some land there that would make it so you're never on the freeway itself. I'm just looking for potential places where we actually do have some jurisdiction and small little pieces of, of section of trail. Can help close big, big gaps and protect a large community of people.
Continuing down here, the parking at San Andreas and Sawyer Camp Trails, I think is something that would. Be handled outside of the ATP, so that would be, you know, I think probably say comment received for. City staff here. To look into that. And, and we will bring up the bridge on the spur trail to. Our E R R team to just confirm that. For the Banbury easement, we were not aware of that to show that in the plan, so I do think as part of any spur trail improvements, there's no. Precluding connecting more points than what is shown on that map. And so I just would emphasize again that this is showing preliminary alignment, it's not showing the ultimate implementation of anything, so. Again, as these things move forward into the design process, there is the opportunity to. Make those additional connections. And then the barrier on El Camino Real, I believe from previous conversations that we've had with city staff, that's something that's actually being. Discussed with Caltrans and looked at as part of. Some of the planning efforts that are ongoing with the streetscape plan to either through landscaping or some form of physical barrier. Even the barriers have been shown to be, they aren't always effective in stopping those crossings because people still want to cross where they want to cross and they'll hop the fence. And then the last thing I was just gonna say and I apologize if I missed anything, so the overcrossing on. Milbury Avenue, so the current improvements that are being moved forward on Milbury Avenue. Are not new over pedestrian bike overcrossing. But are actually on-street facilities and so those are the ones that are moving forward. Right now because of the expense and cost of that overcrossing itself and the need to. Get Caltrans, get more Caltrans approval to have that overcrossing be built and obtain that funding. And so I, I don't think that there would be, in any way, it would be. And so I don't think that there would be, in any way, it would be precluding traveling across Millbrae Avenue on-street with that new facility with the new new overcrossing. And then I guess a final comment I would just say on the parking protected bike lanes, definitely there is a concern around visibility. And so that's why on the concept, and I know it's it's a concept, so it's not showing everything perfectly, but the design is, you'll notice that the landscaping starts at certain points and the parking ends earlier than it would currently on-street. And that is with the intent to create the sightline so that a approaching vehicle that would turn is able to see a bicyclist that would be in that conflicting position so that the landscaping would be such that you could see through there so that the car would not be obstructing. And in addition to that, when you do do the turn radius on the the separation between the bicyclist and the vehicle lane that is typically designed in a way to slow vehicle speeds down such that they do have that opportunity to see see there. So there are ways to design it. I recognize that that is a concern that that people do have, and that would be something that would get worked out again through that planning process on on that specific improvement.
Hey, Commissioner Wong, or did you finish, Mr. Broughton, did you finish? I think there was a question about, sorry, I'll go back to Commissioner Wong, but I think there was a question about the creek. Trying to read my own notes.
He addressed it. He addressed it.
Oh, he did. Okay. And then the bike lane to Magnolia through Magnolia on Murchison up to Mills High School.
I think that one's being proposed on the on the ATP already.
It is being, okay.
I must have missed it.
Can you can? Yeah, it's, there's a lot of material to go through. Okay, so Mr. Commissioner Wong.
I think overall I like the plan a lot. I'd be ready to approve of the plan, given that it's a conceptual plan. Its purpose, I think, is just to do budgeting and forecasting. And obviously, you know, like El Camino Real, there may be major changes with the Grand Boulevard design plans. Number of lanes may change. The median strips may change. There may be boldouts and different idea swells and different ideas. So a lot of this is subject to the El Camino Real Grand Boulevard design plans. So that's another reason why I might want to separate out the costs and the projects related to that versus like the neighborhoods. But overall, I'd make a recommendation to approve of this and recommend that the city council approve of the City of Millbrae Active Transportation Plans with comments noted from the Planning Commissioner here tonight, and that may they may be addressed in future design phases of the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Wong. Do we have any other comments from people? We're not quite at the motion phase, but Commissioner Del Negro?
That's okay, actually. I did appreciate, I wanted to tell Mr. Broughton, I appreciate your responses are fantastic. I'm glad that you're able to reply to some of those. I won't rebuttal to them, but yeah. Cyclists, you know, we always have our own opinions of how we feel safe.
Yes, and I, yes, any other commissioners have any? Commissioner Quigg? You're muted.
Trying to find the button. Actually, I agree that there should be two right turn lanes on the El Camino going north. It really is that whole road needs to be addressed. It's kind of scary with that new project opening up and all of the development in Burlingame. That is north Burlingame. I hope it gets addressed. I don't think it's the time on this project. But I think as we get to the next phases, when we get to the specific plan, we were guaranteed that they would do reconfiguring of the lanes on Millbrae Avenue. Before any of these developments even were approved, we were already at number F, which means it's horrible. And I've got to tell you, I am scared to cross some of the streets from one side of El Camino to the other side of El Camino. They're very intimidating. The one at Millbrae Avenue and El Camino, even with the cars, sometimes I'm going, oh, my God, look at all these lanes. If somebody messes up a little bit, it could be just a terrible mess. So but hopefully that will be addressed at the specific plan part of this project. There is also something that Christopher Commissioner Del Negro had brought about Hemlock and going through. When you get from a couple of those neighborhoods, by the time you get, I think it's Marina Vista, the one all the way at the top, some of that land in there does not belong to the city either. It it's, I'm not really sure who owns it, but it's 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 it really needs to be worked on. I think it's a wonderful idea that that happened, but I think it's a little bit out of our control right now. Once again, I think that they've done a fantastic job with what's there. And it is conceptual and it's something to work with. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have? Commissioner Del Negro?
I was at the that point on Hemlock. I think it's just important that we maintain a connection from the California Drive Extension to center in some way, shape or form that does not require the use of El Camino Real. It is very important that that route, which is the major route in from the south and the Rage Mountain Route in from the north are connected. Whether that uses the Santa Paula Crossing and Monterey Trail is one way, and then you cross back over at center, whether or not we find some way, and that is SFPUC land that is at the end there of Hemlock, and there's an electrical wire over it as well. We don't have access to that. Maybe in a development or redevelopment, there might be an opportunity for for asking for an easement. But as of right now, it's just made very important that we, in a statement, say, we need to maintain a connection between the California Drive Extension and center street without using El Camino Real. And that's an equitability for the Marina Vista community. They need to have access and people north coming south need to be able to get there without having to use El Camino Real if they are not a strong and fearless rider.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Okay, I'll just add a few comments because I think everybody's gone through a lot, already mentioned a lot. There were a couple of comments in the public comment section regarding evolving modes of transportation such as electric scooters and skateboards. And it was said that Planning Commission could possibly maybe consider adding that somehow into your, taking that into account. I don't know how that would happen, but I just I'm wondering if that's something we'd want to add in. And then something regarding bike and scooter rental policy. And not that we would add a policy in here, but to add something in here that would recommend eventually developing some kind of a policy to address it. Has, how, is that something that we would just add as a comment, since it's already a public comment, or how does that? Or did you want to get feedback from the commission in terms of how they feel about it? The staff. Mr. Quivard?
Yeah, it's definitely something that we heard a couple of times and we discussed during the the BPASC Bicycle Pedestrian Affairs Committee. And I think, I think at this point, it's kind of something again that we could add as a comment and kind of have that as a attachment to the plan as it gets to the city council.
Okay, thank you. And one thing I was gonna say about the Hemlock neighborhood, I think I don't know exactly what the other commissioners were thinking, but one thing is I don't think they want it to be totally through fair where you get from Hemlock to the developments, because then that would be probably not a good thing in terms of the privacy of the neighborhoods. So that's, that's kind of my thought on that, not.
There's no road there.
Yeah, so.
There should not be a drive car access at that point.
Right. So you're just talking about around that neighborhood, something where they can.
There needs to be a throughway by bicycle and pedestrians is what.
Get through. Okay, got it. And then a, I oh, one of the, one of the concepts that was on here on page forty-six were with the frontage roads to El Camino. I think that really needs to happen. Something like that, because the way that it is now, my office is on La Cruz and I get honking horns, I hear honking horns all the time because cars are coming in from El Camino and trying to turn into the frontage road while another car is trying to keep going and it's just a mess out there. And I I don't know if I missed, if I haven't seen any accidents, but I would be surprised if there weren't any already there. But you know, these these frontage roads accessing from the smaller streets instead of El Camino, I think is a big issue. So I would really love to see that addressed. I wrote so many notes, I can't find my my own box. So if we were to, again, I'm trying to wrap my head around this, so we would be I, and I'm sorry to the rest of the commissioners, so we would be recommending approval of this, but then if there are other intersections or other concepts or things like that that come up along the way, there is the flexibility to add that into here. That's my understanding. Yes?
I believe so, yes.
Believe so.
Yeah. Addendum for that, I would suggest, yeah, putting in there that disclaimer that plans may change and drastically depending on El Camino Real development and downtown business development and prioritization schemes and so forth. Needs to have flexibility and adaptability.
Yeah, I mean, there is on El Camino definitely because there's a statement that it's a Caltrans. Sorry, missed maybe all that Mr. Martin said, but there does, it does have some wording as to that effect in here. Mr. Martin?
Oh, yeah, I apologize. I was just gonna say that we will be, we have been taking notes as previously mentioned, and we will be addressing comments and 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 bringing this forward to the city council and responding in kind, whether, you know, it's a a revision or a slight edit to the plan or or some some other type of implementing measure. It'll be but addressed in that section.
And was there any, is there any big topic that you wanted consensus from Planning Commission on, or are you just going to take them as they come? I mean, whatever you can incorporate, do and or how, how did, is there anything that you want us to get more feed, to give more feedback on specifically?
You know, we, we got a lot of feedback and this is a lot of good comments. This is precisely the the idea of get feedback from you before we present it to the city council. And what we'll be doing after this meeting is refining the comments that you've made tonight and then our responses to each of those. And then when it goes to the plant city council, we'll have a table showing what the comment was and our response to that comment.
Okay, thank you. So any other comments from commissioners, or do we want to go ahead and start with the motion?
Yeah, I'm mute.
Yeah, so the resolution kind of says resolution by the City of Millbrae making a recommendation to the Millbrae City Council to adopt the draft Active Transportation Plan. So where would you, would we do a resolution or because with the resolution, it looks like we're making this recommendation. However, the recommendation is subject to a list of items. So when Jean goes to sign this resolution, it's not very clear.
Yeah, so the the recommendation is to, what we're looking for is for you to provide recommendation for us to move forward or not to move forward. Our hope is that the elements of the plan are sufficient enough to the degree where we can make some minor edits and corrections. But if you feel that the the plan is severely deficient, then that's that's a separate, much larger issue. So in the recommendation, what I would recommend is that the commission, if the commission does choose to move this forward to the city council is to approve the plan and then subject to the comments and responses, the staff will will address similar to conditions of approval for a development project.
To the chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
My feeling is that the plan is entirely sufficient, other than just the two eighty north and south, and at least putting some comments around a need for it and need to support it. I think that is a regional deficiency and Millbrae does have an active role in making sure that we support a solution. So other than that one element, I feel like, you know, we are there with a very good Active Transportation Plan.
I would be okay with that. I would be supportive of that to have that element added in there. I have seen bikers on that on on that ramp and it's scary.
Probably seen me.
Maybe I'll get you next time.
Darcy Smith, Community Development Director, can I just make a suggestion? If that is the sort of the the one or if there's a second main point of emphasis, you could make a motion to adopt the resolution recommending approval and then have as part of that motion with that specific change highlighted along with the list of all the other recommendations. And that way the council would know that was your main emphasis in making the motion to forward the resolution. And I will say, you know, we're really busy with study sessions coming up where we'll get your input. And just to reiterate, the council really wanted to spin this item off because it is, as Commissioner Wong pointed out, a conceptual plan that that will be revisited by the council and you as projects move forward, especially through the budgetary CIP process, which you might recall came to you this year and will continue to come to you for review and conformance with the general plan. Which I know was a new thing to you, but we will do that moving forward because under state law, the Planning Commission does review the CIP annually for conformance with our adopted general plan and then the specific plan. So you will have more opportunities to weigh in on this, but I think at this point, what we were trying to do is spin this off to get a successful item. And we're really excited to get to council in October and then we can dive deeper into many of the other really critical pieces that you will see in much more granular fashion, such as the streetscape plan, the specific plan. And we have a our first study session on the specific plan where you'll see a lot of detail next week. So we'd like to focus on that and move this forward to council so that they can adopt it and and hopefully get grants moving. But you could make the motion with the emphasis, as Commissioner Del Negro said, on the two eighty missing bicycle facility. And we can move it along, along with a table with all the other comments that we'll be putting together next week or two.
So with that, yes.
If you don't mind, this is near and dear to my heart. I've worked on this heavily over here. Over the last few years, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Active Transportation Plan with the comments incorporated, the particular emphasis on the element just described on the two eighty north and south access points. And the comments previously captured.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I would second.
Got two.
Give us a.
Okay, Commissioner Wong seconds.
Sorry, not me that way on your screen.
And any other comment, is is there any other issue that anybody wants to add to that, or is the two eighty sufficient? Good.
I'd recommend the connectivity up to the Sawyer Camp Trail also to, that should be prioritized. And also just to separate the project into phases and grouping so that those changes on El Camino, which are likely to change with the Grand Boulevard plans, likely to be a separate issue from the neighborhood priorities.
Anybody have any thoughts on that? Commissioner Davis?
All of our other comments, such as those, are being captured and moved on to council. I, I don't think this has an actual list of priorities. And I don't think it's our place right now to prioritize the projects. So as long as that's captured and, you know, remind us later that these are things we need to focus on, I think that's enough.
Thank you. So again, so we have, we do have a motion in a second. If there are any other comments, if there aren't any other comments, then let's just call for the vote.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Approve.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Joe?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Yes, so again, thank you so much to all of the staff for all of your hard work on getting this together. Thank you for, to Commissioner Del Negro, it's great to have you on here for this being one of your first votes. Not the first one, but one of the first votes is on this project that is very near and dear to your heart, and I'll see you out on two eighty sometime. But hopefully just.
I don't know how anybody can bike in Millbrae with the hills.
That was my question, but.
Barely can walk them, let alone.
I have to be honest, the worst part of my ride is usually when I wake up and the first thing you have to do is bike up Larkspur. That just kills you. You want to do that later on in the day when you're warm, not when you first.
Don't want to do that ever. I can't imagine doing that, so. But yeah, very glad that you were able to be on board with us here for this ATP, the Active Transportation Plan. So we'll go on to item six, which is the update on staff updates, please.
Yes, commissioners, I just wanted to give a brief overview of the upcoming planning commission meetings. Next week, September twenty eighth, we have a joint planning commission and city council study session at five P M regarding the specific plan and the heights and densities in that area, downtown in El Camino area. On October fourth, the first planning commission meeting in October, we're taking the Millbrae Station area plan images and a text amendment. So if you may remember, earlier, I believe this, this year, or was it end of last year, we held a study session on images, replacing some of the images in the specific plan. And so we have since then hired a consultant to assist us with that, and we have formalized those images. We've actually enhanced some of the ones that we've chosen previously, so we're excited to share that with you on October fourth. And then and then also in October, with the motion to move this forward to the city council, we will be taking the Active Transportation Plan to city council meeting and for for formal adoption. We, subsequent to the October four planning commission, planning commission meeting, if that moves forward, we'll be taking that to the city council for formal adoption on the images and text amendments. And then furthermore, we'll, we're also looking to have a hearing sometime this year on thirteen zero one Broadway, which is a development application subject to SB thirty-five, which will be a new, a new, a new project for the commission to consider under this, this, this act. So, you know, that that'll be coming this, in a few months ahead here. And then also, just a reminder that some of you may have attended the APA session last week. Those sessions have some, there's a legislative session on recent legislation. That'll be available through the end of this year, so if you missed that, you'll be able to access those sessions. So and then that, that's the update, staff estimate.
Thank you very much. I was gonna mention that as well, the APA and recently signed SB nine and SB ten. I think it would be good for all of us as the planning commissioners to be aware of all of, you know, of the legislation that's out there, so encourage you to listen to those sessions if you haven't had a chance to. Okay, so moving on to item seven, announcements. Anybody have announcements? No, I think we have Man and Women of the Year.
Yes.
Commissioner Quick?
Yes, you should be receiving, the invitations went out last week, towards the end of the week. So we should all be receiving invitations. I believe that if you belong to a group like planning, only one will be distributed, and then people can make their reservations from that. But, you know, like Lions Club, we're not sending out invitations to every Lions members. It's, it's for the president to share with all of the members, so every group hopefully will do that. There's the ones that went to City Hall, and so hopefully we get a really good turnout for the Man of the Year, Robert G. Gotcha, Marion Kong, and Sophia Altazar. So put it on your calendar, and it'll be at Green Hills on the fifteenth. Thank you.
Okay, and any other announcements? Okay, so seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn the planning commission meeting for this evening, and thank you for joining us, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Thanks, everybody. Good meeting.